Okay, I think we'll go ahead and start. It is Thursday, September 17th. We are meeting in the boardroom for our board meeting. We want to welcome everyone here and we'd like to begin by a roll call.
Larry Jepson, board member.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, board member.
Kathy Krishjansen, board member.
Chris Corcoran, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Dale Hanson, business administrator.
Thank you. Alrighty, we'll go ahead and have our pledge and mission statement with Roger Pulsifer. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna start off with a fun thing. Tonight, we would like to honor our district teacher of the year, Randall Beach. And so, that's going to be done by Principal Dave Swenson. Have you both come up?
Thank you. I hope you can hear me with the mask and everything, but we don't have too many people here. But it's a pleasure to recognize Randall. He's received a lot of awards. This is one award that he has not received, and he's not a stranger here to the board meeting, especially the last three years, because we've been able to recognize him and also his students at performing and taking three state championships in a row. And we're looking forward in the next couple of months of maybe being back up here, recognizing the students for a fourth state championship. And I don't know if anybody went to the family night band review on Monday, but it was quite spectacular to see all the bands and compete. And it's fun to have such a strong music department in our district and everybody and see the kids out there and the fans and the parents. And I'll tell you, it's...I told one parent, I said, "It's almost like a cult, in a way." A good cult, because they drink that orange punch, and man, they are committed. It's one of the well-most oiled machines at our school with the parent support and everything. And that's obviously definitely a reflection of Randall. But you know, just a couple, you know, he's been a teacher of the year, I think at Skyview, I can't remember if at Green Canyon yet, but I know at the state level, he's won the Sorensen Excellence for the Arts Program of the State of Utah, which is, I don't think you get any higher than that in the state of Utah. He's been recognized by his peers at the state level by presenting best teaching practices at the state Utah Music Association Educators Association several times. And so, but those are all great things. But what I'd like to do, if I could, is I'd like to hear from a couple of students and some teachers about him, because that's really where the rubber meets the road. So here's one of his colleagues. He says, "Randall Beach is a true educator. I have no understanding of music or marching band, but I have been totally enamored by his expertise and ability to motivate all students to do their best and continually improve. I've had two daughters participate in the color guard, and they both continue to speak highly of Mr. Beach while also consistently implementing those leadership attributes and habits obtained while in marching band." Another one of his colleagues. "He is mindful of the unique requirements of each student group, and he works to understand the needs of students that aren't in his own. He brings creative excitement, ideas to the table, and he motivates students unlike anyone I have ever seen before. We joke that if Randall and I had to deliver bad news to a student, they would leave my presence crying, while they would leave Randall's presence with a renewed sense of hope and a new outlook on life. Even though he is easily one of the best band directors in the state, he isn't satisfied. He works to improve and create the best possible program and atmosphere for the students, and they turn into incredible musicians and people under his tutelage." Another colleague, one more. "In his work, there is nothing more important to Randall than his students. One of his mantras, which the students know by heart, is, 'There is nothing more fun than being very, very good at something.'" Next to his family and students, there is something else that Randall really loves. He loves to build things. As his colleague, it has been so fun to watch Randall build the band program at Green Canyon. His foresight and clear vision of what he wanted the band to be able to contribute to the culture of Green Canyon has proven out to have been right, not just for the band students, but for the entire student body. What has been created at Green Canyon, both in the band program and the school as a whole, is very rare, and the excitement of the community and parents and students about the band is a very special thing. Randall has laid the foundation, and the students are reaping the awesome results of his hard work. Now, I just want to end with some students. And I will read through them all, I highlight some areas that he put. "From the moment you watch how he teaches," is one of his students, "you can tell that Mr. Beach is not like other teachers. Never do I feel more safe at home and welcome in his class than in any other I've ever been in. An extraordinary characteristic that he holds in his value is his students. Somehow..."So how does he get normal high school kids to succeed at something that takes so much patience, effort, and focus? I believe it's rooted in the idea that everyone can do hard things, some things that others can't even imagine doing. This belief allows him to transform the lives of so many students, to show them the values of hard work and determination that are becoming more difficult to find in today's society of young adults. So not only is he an amazing band teacher, but he is an extremely humble and wise leader that I'll always be able to look up to for help." Another student. "To write something about Mr. Beach has to be one of the most challenging tasks someone could assign, because there's so much to say. He truly cares for each of his students, and that they meet their maximum potential as music students. He has personally stayed and helped me for hours and hours when I have asked for help, and I know I'm not the only one. The most amazing part about Mr. Beach is that he cares about his students on a more personal level. Every year, we talk about things like supreme ownership, being the better person, and making intelligent decisions. These are all the things that I have taken to heart and have shaped my life in high school." He goes on to tell about an experience that happened a couple of years ago when they didn't make the finals at the BOA, and then how they reacted to that and what they did. But he remembers this, "It was such a valuable lesson. In a time of such sadness and disappointment, what better thing is there to do than to put others first?" I think this really shows who Mr. Beach is. Last one. And it's fitting at the end. "I moved to Utah a month before school ended, my eighth grade year. Marching band additions had already happened, but it was something I wanted to be a part of. My mom contacted Mr. Beach and told him that I just moved here and I had no friends yet. High school's around the corner, I didn't want to be the new kid, and had been in bands in middle school and thought that marching band would be an interesting option. So Mr. Beach came out to Spring Creek and heard me play. I got into marching band, and that's where I met my best friends. Band is the whole reason I am who I am. It has shaped me into the person I always wanted to be." And here's the last sentence. "And that's because Mr. Beach took time to listen to just one kid. That is why he is so qualified to be the district teacher of the year."
Stay here.
Would you please introduce your family?
Mr. Beach, would you please say a few words? And then stay still. Don't go, don't go. Stay there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Swenson. I appreciate it. I'm very honored, the stumbling. I really appreciate all my family being there, they're very supportive. Yeah, I just have to say that I love what I do now more than I ever have in my whole life and my whole career. And a big part of that is where I am. I just can't imagine being surrounded by better people from administrators. I mean, everywhere I go, I see administrators supporting what our students do, feeling a lot of personal support to me and to my students, and it's really, really awesome. I have so many, I mean, I just, look at Scott, and tell me, look at just all these faces that I've interacted with, and I just think, "What awesome people." You know, we go down to St. George, and all the bands are down there, and look around, there's Superintendent Norton in the stands, and there's Dave, and just all these people. And it just makes working here and working with these students just a thrill, and I love it. And I tell my students as often as I can, "I really love being here with you guys each day." And I mean that. I really love getting up in the morning and going to my job, and I love associating with all of you. And there's just so many, I mean, even Kathy, aren't you the ones responsible to get us to play down at that Utah Board?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, things like that. And I take a group of students down there, and we had such an amazing experience. That was one of the coolest performance experiences I've ever had with a group of students. And just, and Dave is constantly looking for ways to support the band, and just on and on and on. So I thank all of you so much for creating such a wonderful school environment, a wonderful district, and it's just, I really appreciate being here and love teaching here in our district. Thank you very much.
Alright, we would like to introduce Curtis Coombs. He has come to give a little presentation to our district teacher of the year.
So, this is one of the funnest parts of my job. First of all, let me say thank you all for letting us do this. This is incredible, and you can't get more, I don't know what to say. When your students are the ones who are telling you all these things, it doesn't get better than that. All these people are wonderful, but the students' lives that you've impacted have been incredible. So, what we like to do is to recognize you as the teacher of the year for Murdoch Auto Group, and it'll be Murdoch VW, we would like to give you a lease of a car for a year. And so, what we'll do, it'll take me a couple of days to get this all set up, and I'll call you and probably your lovely wife, and we'll have you come down, and we'll sit down, we'll figure out, and we'll pick out a car that you can use for a year, no charge. So it's one of the things that we love to do. We are so grateful for, we're grateful for the administrators, the teachers, everything. I just had two kids finish high school, and without the teachers and the administrators, I have no idea where they would be, because I was useless as a parent in high school. So we appreciate all that you do and all the time that you give, all the selfless time you give to those kids. We greatly appreciate it. So from the Murdoch Auto Group, thank you very much.
Alright, we would like to get a picture of...Terry, will you go down and be in it too, please?
Thank you.
Could we have your family stand? We would like the family to stand, because it takes an awful lot of family support to pull this off. Thank you so much.
This is my son, AJ, my wife, Jill, my little granddaughter, Kesha, and grandson, Aiden, my daughter-in-law, Havita, my husband, this is my son, Conrad, they're married. Honored my son, and impressed my son, my daughter, Melissa, and my daughter, Shear.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Alright, if you are not wanting to stay for the whole meeting, this is really a good time to step out, but you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't know if we have any public input or not. None? Okay, so the district has come up with a little statement for when we have public input, and I'm just gonna read it to you, because we didn't make copies for all of you, okay? "The Cache County Board of Education welcomes public comments from district patrons during regular board meetings. Feedback is an important part of being responsive to the public. Participants must sign up prior to the comment period using the clipboard at the back of the boardroom. Each speaker is provided three minutes to address the board. Board members will not directly respond to comments or answer questions during the comment period, but if the speaker would like someone to follow up with a response, they are welcome to make that request. During public comment, speakers are asked not to address employment or personnel issues, complaints, or other avenues for appeal or available, items which have a separate public hearing. Patrons are always welcome to submit written feedback directly to the superintendent or to the board members." And I think this probably comes out of the Utah policy, does it not?
We gathered that, Tim went to work asking to, basically for Chris's concerns, that there has to be a balance between the public being able to come and address, and the fact that we need to remain with items on the agenda, and we will get back to them if they raise questions as soon as the next day, if we can.
Okay. Alright, so is this something I should read before each?
Every time.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item then, and I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote then.
Okay, all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next, we have one item on our action agenda, and I will take a motion to approve the utility easement at North Cache Middle School.
I move that we approve the utility easement at North Cache Middle School.
I second it.
Alright, any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
Yeah, all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move down to our reports agenda. I'm just gonna switch the order here just a little bit. So we'll do South Cache, Andy first, and then you don't have to hang around unless you would like to. So, Andy, oh my gosh, I just lost your last name.
One.
Oh, yeah, I should know that for sure. Okay, so he is going to present a request to, let's see, amend the South Cache Middle School Trust Land, School Land Trust Plan.
It is hard to believe that we're a month into the school year, and you know, it's been a great start. Kathy, it was great to get the message from you this last week, thanking the staff and everybody that's been involved in getting the school year off right, so thank you for that. At South Cache, we've got a lot of great programs up and going, and a lot of that does come from the funding that we get from the School Land Trust and the TSSA money. But tonight, we really wanted to just ask for your consideration in amending the School Land Trust Plan that was approved earlier. As we put in our initial one, we did it with preliminary money, and we didn't know that we were gonna be getting some of the carryover for the same quantity of last year. So two years ago, we carried over about $5,000, and this last year, we carried over closer to $25,000 that we needed to go and just allocate into our goals that we have this year. We've got two major goals, big push on learning, and the second one with the technology. So we're just really trying to just buoy up and make those programs that we have identified already, get a little bit more, make it better. So you hopefully did receive a copy of our new one and the rationale from Principal Snow, but just wanted to stand formally and thank you all, but ask you for your consideration in our amendment.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Are there specific classrooms that you're gonna plan, that you're planning to use, the iPads and Apple TVs in?
Great question. So we've got our PLC leadership teams, and we're having at least one member of each of those different subcommittees using it. So it's gonna be across all tested, and some of our non-tested subjects are gonna be able to use it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andy. Alright, we will go ahead and move up to our first item on the agenda here, the fraud risk assessment, follow-up questions and answers. So I sent out some questions that I had after taking the fraud assessment, fraud risk assessment, and then Terry looked up some information and sent it back to me. So I'm gonna pass this down, so you have a copy of the questions and answers, and I sent all of that to Dale, and he's gonna give us more detail on everything. So hopefully, everyone will feel fine about what we're doing here, or will know what we need to fix if it's not being done correctly. And if you have any other questions for Dale, this will be the time to ask them. Okay.
Alright, so going through the first question here, it had to do with training was requiring, or saying that there are three positions that every school board should have. One is the chair of the board, one is a clerk, and the other is a treasurer. And I know as Terry's found out, and as we've looked across, that basically every school district here in the state is operating with a chairman, but then also has what they call basically a clerk treasurer, where it's a combined operation. Looking at the responsibilities of each of those positions, it says the clerk is supposed to keep records of the meeting proceedings, and that's what I do. Maintains the financial records, which I do. Says does not overexpend budgets, which is what I look for, and presents financial reports to the board at least quarterly, which I do also. And then said may not sign a single signature check, which we don't have in any of our accounts. It always requires two signatures on those accounts. And so really, all those positions, I feel, is part of my job here. But also, the position of a treasurer is, one is that they sign the checks after determining if there are sufficient funds are available to cover those checks. Again, I do that as part of my job as a business administrator. Says that they maintain custody of all money, and really, the funds are handled by my secretary, which is Chris Osman. So she receives the funds, and then she also, down below, it says issues receipts for the monies received. She issues those receipts. And then as far as deposits and invests all money, Chris will actually make the deposits electronically for checks, and then I will take the deposits down if there's any cash received, because that won't work in the nice little deposit system we have. So in this sense, we kind of divide that, and we double count cash with both Chris and Mitzi Hatch, who's our accounts payable secretary. So they kind of cover both of these things together. Talks about the receives all public funds and monies payable to the district. So again, like I say, the funds do come through Chris on that. Keeps accurate detailed account of all monies received. So with the deposits that Chris makes and the receipts, then it provides a report which we have a full accounting of all funds that are received throughout the district. So really, the clerk and the treasurer positions, the treasurer actually has no function here around the board table itself. It's really more the business operations of the school district. And so they're trying to put checks and balances in place to make sure there's protection of funds and trying to minimize opportunities for fraud or deception in that way. And so that's why we have several people working in the system to try to provide those same checks and balances, and that's reviewed each year with our financial audit. They look at our, the checks and balances we have in place, making sure they look adequate and whatnot. And so I think we actually have a separate clerk and a treasurer. The treasurer is probably made up of two people, which would be Mitzi and Chris. And then I also share with some of those responsibilities a little bit. So we may not have, in a sense, one person filling that role that looks like what we were seeing in the training itself, but it really is a function of our business department that covers those same division of responsibilities, so.
Okay, thanks. That's good for us to get this information, so we know.
The other talks about a yearly board meeting schedule. So we do approve that usually in the last meeting of the last fiscal year, in June. And then we have that scheduled placed on our district website. It's also out on the state transparency website, so that anyone can go in and see the schedule there. So we comply with that without any issue there. There's a question about, is it necessary to have board meetings held starting no earlier than 6:00 PM?
That was in the booklet, or on the quiz, the survey.
I actually had USBA contact the Verbiage White Law Firm that provides a lot of guidance to them about that question, and as they looked it up, they said that really only applies to when we have like a truth and taxation hearing. Because when we do that, we have to schedule that with the county and set a time, and it can't start before 6:00. So usually on those days, we'll start a meeting at 5:30, but wait until 6:00 to actually hold the truth and taxation portion of the meeting. So Richard Stoll was saying that there are many more districts starting to move to holding meetings starting at 6:00, just to maybe provide better transparency, giving the public a better chance to be able to get off work and be able to come and attend the meetings. So if that's something you have any interest in considering, that's a possibility. We've been holding meetings starting at 5:30 for about a while, as you remember.
Probably isn't anybody here that remembers when we used to meet at 7:00? Oh, yeah, you do, okay. So it was moved to 5:30, and it got us home a lot earlier, but that was a choice we made then. Logan's always done theirs a little earlier than we had, but we did use to start at 7:00. So if you wanted to move it to 6:00, we could make that move.
Well, I think the 5:30 time is great for everybody, as long as we're doing it according to what the state says we have to do. So apparently, we are.
Apparently, we're right, and yeah, we're in line with the requirements there.
Alright, thanks.
Says, "Do we have a personnel policy?" And yes, we do have that as part of our district policies. That's one that's really addressed each year through employee negotiations. We don't have a formal review, I think, set up in place with the board to do that review every year, but can be accomplished with the committee we have right now, looking at board policies. But in a sense, we do look at it each year in the negotiation process, and then we bring back any proposed modifications as part of the negotiated agreements with the employees.
So do you feel like we're doing that?
Yeah, I think we are. A purchasing policy, you know, Scott Rigby's the one who really helps watch over that. He's over our purchasing there in the district, and so we've made a few modifications along the way as the state has changed the state procurement law to make sure we're in line with that policy. And so I think we've been able to stay up and keep that current quite well. I think it was showing that, well, yeah, we've made changes in, well, 2017 had to do with the child nutrition program. There was a special purchasing requirements that were just specific to the child nutrition program, that we had to actually put policy in place to comply with those. So there is a small section there that is separate from the general purchasing procedures just to accommodate the specific needs of child nutrition. But I think we're right in line with that one, just fine.
Gary, did you know there's a elementary procedures policy, or elementary, what's it called? Elementary purchasing procedures policy in the, in Board Docs? Elementary purchasing procedures policy in the, in Board Docs?
There are other procedures.
It's so old that... Would you just look at it sometime?
Yeah, let's do that.
And see if it's even necessary to keep.
All right. Says do we have a grammar policy? And yes, we do. It's one that, I know Kirk McCray is the one who really oversees that. He, like the next question asks, who handles record requests? Kirk McCray is the first person that all record requests come through. And then both Kurt Jenkins and myself are also designated to handle some of those requests, depending on the nature of the subjects being addressed in the request. So a lot of those, like I say, they all initially come through Kirk, and then he may steer them to either Kurt Jenkins or myself. So that seems to be working well. Talked about a uniform fee schedule to charge for record requests. Fees are only used in the time that the request is so detailed that it takes additional time and maybe has to have somebody really spend some significant time pulling records together. The state does say that we don't have to generate new records to answer the question of a person. We just really need to provide records that we have. If there is time that we need somebody making copies or whatever it is, it does say that we need to use the individual with the lowest salary that is qualified to be able to provide that service, so that we don't have the superintendent out making copies for somebody. And so that's just fair to the public, keeping costs down. So I honestly can't think of any time that we have charged a fee for anyone making a request for records. And if we made a schedule, I don't think you'd want to tie it to an exact dollar amount, because it varies depending on the nature of who's doing the service and what's involved. So I think as long as we stay within the state parameters that we have the person with the least, the lowest salary that can accomplish the request and not have to incur exorbitant amounts of time in pulling records and that together, that we're okay. We can't have individuals come in and actually observe the documents, but we have to oversee them as they do that. Can't just hand the books to them and let them have free rein with those kind of records. And then it asks, how much bond insurance do we have? And how much do we pay for bond insurance? So that's something that actually, here in Utah, disappeared 20 years ago. At times, there were, if our bond rating was at a certain level, we would want to buy bond insurance to provide more security to investors so that they would perhaps give us a lower interest rate in purchasing those bonds, because the risk was lower. Twenty years ago, the State Bond Guarantee Act was put into place where when we issue bonds, we issue them under the umbrella of the state of Utah, which has a AAA bond rating. And they have that with Fitch, Standard &amp; Poor's, and with Moody's. And so it gives us basically the best security, because we are then selling those under the umbrella of the AAA bond rating. So there is no requirement or need to buy additional bond insurance to satisfy the lenders or the purchasers of our bonds. So, yeah, that's really kind of a moot question at this point. We don't even have any bond insurance in place at this time. It asks, is our district registered? And this is something that just started here a year ago, where now every state agency or entity is required to, every year, register with the state in showing that we exist and showing our founding documents and everything like that. So two years ago, we did get that all in place so that all the proper documentation was provided. And every year, we renew that registration. And there's a small fee that we pay with that. We just did that here last June, and so we're good for another year. So we are in place to keep that ongoing, and there's not a problem with that now. And then the last had to do with, how should we go about reviewing our personnel policy and records policy annually? And I liked Terry's comment here where she said it would make sense for the board policy committee with the appropriate district leaders to review these policies. But that would mean the committee would have to be more active than they currently are. So, yeah, trying to review every policy every year is a big undertaking.
Yeah. Well, it's impossible to review every one of them. Larry, would you put that on your list when things kind of calm down in the district? That that's something we, if it ever does?
That's what we've been waiting for.
So, yeah, we've never done it annually, though, right?
No, not formally every policy annually.
Well, it's just personnel and records. It's not all policy.
That's what I was thinking. It's just personnel and records.
Okay. So that's simpler?
Yes. Very much.
Okay.
Oh, then you can leave out all the student section.
Unless I'm interpreting it wrong, but that's the way I understand it.
All right. Did anybody else have any other questions besides those as you did the survey?
When I took the test, just to find out all the questions, I actually took the one, I thought it was for the school district boards, but it was one for the boards of any other state entity. And I was, it had one place in there where it says, compensation for board members couldn't exceed $5,000.
I know, I liked that one.
Because compensation would include not only the salary that's received, but also benefits. So insurance would exceed that already. The firm of Verbage and White straightened me out on that, saying that a couple of years ago, there was actually the law put in place by the legislature that says the school boards actually control the compensation that's received by board members. Just requires that if there's any change, or increase, I should say, in compensation, that that has to go through a public meeting so that the public's aware of that. And really, itself, there is no cap or anything in place in that situation, so.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're reaching it anyway.
Is there any difference between compensation and benefits? Do they make you include health insurance in there? They don't, do they?
Well, compensation includes benefits, so.
It includes benefits.
So that's the only thing that would put you over.
Right.
And, yeah, I thought the law said that any benefit that you offer to any of our regular employees could be offered to the board. It's good to know that that...
Yeah. So we're in good shape there.
Doesn't apply to aggregate limit of 5,000, yeah.
Thank you, Dale. I know this is the worst time of the year to ask you to answer these questions, but I think that's the first time, well, that's the first time I've ever had to take that survey. Probably everybody else, right? So we're good for four years. So that's nice. And I'm glad that you answered these questions. I appreciate you going to the work, and also you, Terry, for looking up the information on it. And I did turn in our September goal for USBA that we had done it by taking this assessment. And thank you for reporting back to me on that. I appreciate that.
Oh, I also did update the risk assessment tool that we reviewed in board meeting on the middle of August there. So it did put us up to a score of 330, which moved us from the moderate risk category up to the low-risk category.
Awesome, okay.
That's where we are now.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate that. All righty. Okay, we will move down to item number three, the 2020-2021 TSSA allocation and plans.
Yep, that's on. Well, you have attached in your document, well, in Board Docs, the TSSA information. One of the sheets in there is the allocations for the 2021 school year. We were really questioning during the summer what kind of funds we would be receiving. And I know in the guidelines that we have, it said the board would approve these plans by July. We didn't even know what budgets we were gonna have this year till first part of August. So maybe it would be, we ought to change that to say the board will approve TSSA plans in August or even September, because we certainly didn't come close to doing that in July. And maybe that's simply because of the circumstances that we were under. But the allocations, yeah.
What if we had it say that the board will approve these funds within X number of days that they become available? So you could float.
Yeah. I mean, I can, I'll put in whatever the board thinks you'd want to put for your deadline on that, yeah. But saying July in our guidelines is probably is not going to work on it. Our allocations this year, if you look at the allocation by school, you can see we received as a district a little over $3 million, and it was allocated out by student based on FTE allocations in June that Dale puts together. We have to grab a number that we can just work, and then everybody works with that same number when we do the allocation. Ended up being about $122 per student. And we treat all students equal, kindergarten up through, you know, 12th grade. Kindergarten's a half a student, so that's the only difference there. All the other students are considered a full-time, and they receive the full allocation on it. You will see a little more carryover in the plans this year than what we would typically want, simply because of what happened this spring. We get into the COVID environment, and a lot of budgets, the schools, schools just didn't spend money to spend money. And I think it would be a good exception this year for the board to let the schools work with that. You'll see, when you start reviewing the plans, the carryover's gonna be a little bit higher than what we would typically like. But I think they'll get that corrected as the year goes through for the following year. The guidelines, also a document attached in there. I believe the board needs to approve these guidelines every year. We have not changed the guidelines at all since last year. So if you take a look at those, if there's anything in those guidelines that after the first year, you're questioning anything, the only thing I've pointed out is that maybe we need to change the approval date of the board from July to another date, so we're more consistent in that. In the shared drive, you can see all of the plans. I believe all the plans are updated now.
If you want, I just thought about it. They might need a little bit of refresh.
Okay, you can go ahead and... Yeah, we'll just show you quick. It's in a shared drive, works really slick. I don't know how you did that last year, if you assigned it out by different board members to review the plans.
We did. And I think, if I remember right, we had paper copies of them. They weren't just...
Yeah, this is all digital.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. You can do it quick, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm about to run out of things to talk about, unless you have questions.
Isn't it a shared Google Drive? Because I remember making edits digitally.
You make comments.
Right, comments, sorry.
But it works really well. Yeah, however you do it. Are there any other questions? Why, we're getting ready to pull that up and show that to you about the TSSA plans and your guidelines?
We haven't seen the shared drive yet. Should we have?
It is, it's there.
It is?
Just like a plug.
Where?
Hey, if you click on, let it come up. Can you see your screen now?
It's...
Yeah?
Okay. So there's, if you go to your drive, so wedrive.google.com, you have...
Okay.
Oh, somebody better come mentor me.
Shared with me? Got it.
You're on the big screen.
Yeah.
Big screen, Kathy.
No, it's on the Chromebook.
Oh, on the Chromebook?
You'll see it there.
I'd go to the big screen.
Thank you.
Do you need a mic?
Okay. Now...
Okay, so, want everybody to the drive?
And is that what I sign in by? Or do I have to? Okay.
I can only see four of them.
They haven't been forced to use your...
Yeah.
No.
No. They get to see them all.
So is my password for Google the new one that I had to set up?
I barely remember my own password.
Well, I know. Okay, so we have one that we can get into Board Docs on, and then we have one for Gmail.
Right. It's your Gmail one.
It's your Gmail.
Same thing.
Yes, I forgot to put that in.
And then if you go... Terry, you can't see the TSSA?
No, what do I do?
So now just hit space and start typing. Shared with me?
No, shared drive.
Oh, they're there.
They're there. They're there.
Okay.
Got them, thanks.
So you go to shared drives, you find the drive called TSSA.
Oh, that's crazy, two years worth.
Okay, I'm not there yet.
Neither am I. If it makes you feel better.
Thank you. Oh, what did you do?
Click it. And then click it here.
I'll get there, yeah. Let me show you. So you go to the shared drive. Yours may be in tile format, or it may be in a list like this. You go to TSSA. Just watch your screen that you have in front of you there. Not your Chromebook, but the other one. There's two folders. There's last year's, 19 and 20, and 20 and 21. If you click that, you get to see every single plan for every school in the district. There's a little done by each of them, so you know that they're done. Everybody with me? Okay, so I'm just gonna open Birch Creek. So the way each of the plans work is there's between one and four goals on every school's plan. You got the carryover at the top. This school had a negative balance in their carryover. Here's the allocation that's next, and then the total. So they have less than what their allocation because of the negative balance. And then here's their budget. So for goal one, they've allocated $19,641. For goal two, $48,322. If you want to see by category what that looks like, you can go down the category column or down at the bottom. And then if you want an in-depth on every goal, so this is goal one. Here's the title with a little description about it. Here's our plan, what's the strategies. What would you do if we had funding changes? And then a detailed budget for each individual goal. Okay? If you want to comment, for example, on this certified employee, if you want to make a comment, you just right-click and say, "Comment" down here. You only have rights to comment. I can edit, but you only have rights to comment. And I can say, "Help me understand this better." And leave a comment there. And then the principal can come back through and see your comments and respond to those comments on each of the goals. Once she's responded to your comment, she can actually come here and respond to your comment, clarify something. Once you both check off on that, you just check it, and it's done.
Tim, can I make a comment? On that one, you have to be online there for Birch Creek. The elementary's decided, we gotta grant through the state to help with some counseling in the elementary, but we wasn't enough to put a full-time counselor in their school. So as elementary principals got together, they all decided to take a portion of their TSSA funds. Last year, a couple of our principals actually paid for half of the teacher's salary or counselor's salary completely, which was $35,000, $40,000. This year, they all pooled their money together individually online. They each, if they chipped in $17,000, the grant would then cover the... They each, if they chipped in $17,000, the grant would then cover the rest. So we have a full-time counselor in every elementary school this year. It cost them $17,000 out of the TSSA. So every elementary school, you will see one of their goals is associated with that. And, and it shows like $12,000, $9,000, or $13,000 in the, in the salary. That's because of the benefits and the, the other things that follow behind that. But it comes in line around $17,000. That's just a standard goal for every one of our elementaries. We'll have one for them, that's one.
That's great that they would pool their money that way to spread the cost.
And if you want to, you can comment anywhere in here. If you right-click, you can insert a comment on any aspect of their plan. And then that's how they, but you don't have edit rights, just so you don't accidentally mess something up on calculations.
Thank you.
Will, will you tell me again how you do that? Right-click to edit?
Yeah, just, just right-click. And there's a, you probably have a lot fewer options than I do. But you just go right-click and put a comment anywhere you want.
And then right-click here?
Two fingers.
Sorry, if you don't have a mouse, it's a little more challenging. You can go up under the insert menu up top. If you don't have a, if you're not good at right-clicking with a trackpad, just insert a comment here too.
So, Tim, I think you, you gave us or sent us directions last year, cause I do remember doing this on the computer.
And I'd be happy if you want to call me to, to walk you through doing one and then you'll be off and running.
Okay.
So just, yeah, just give me a buzz. You have my cellphone, I think, so.
Yeah, I do, thank you. All right, thanks. Do the TSSA funds always come this, at this time of the year or? So there's no way that we could tie the TSSA plan in with the school lands?
With the school improvement, I mean with the School Land Trust plan?
Yeah.
They have to be two separate plans. They're two to- totally separate budgets on it.
Okay.
And then our intent would be at the next board meeting to ask the board for board approval. Cause under TSSA, you are the final approving board for TSSA. It doesn't go any farther than you and this board. School Land Trust goes to the state.
Just one of these?
Any other questions on TSSA? The schools, I mean, it's a great boost to the schools in the guidelines. It, it's very clear on what you can spend the money on and what you cannot spend the money on. And our principals would like a little more flexibility on what they could spend it on, but I think what we have in our guidelines is, is a safe area to be on where we should spend the money.
I have a question, Mike. So I was at Green Canyon earlier this week and their enrollment is actually 100 students more than what's listed on here.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
So are, are all of these numbers off a little bit?
Yeah, they are, cause we take the snapshot in June on our FTE and everyone's treated the same.
Okay.
Which is?
Leaving out, next year.
Yeah, it catches up the following year with them. And School Land Trust will do the same. They take the snapshot right in June or even in May and send us the allocation based on student numbers then. So. Any other questions on it? Okay, give us a call if you have any questions and we'll say, we'll ask for approval at the next meeting.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask a quick question because I'm new to reviewing these trust plans? I mean, we reviewed them all last spring, right? So what, what would be, what, what would somebody typically flag at this point now that they've all been migrated into spreadsheets?
We didn't review the TSSA plans in the spring. That was trust lines.
Yeah, trust lines, okay.
TSSA is teacher-student success account. On here, it says TSAA, but it's TSSA on the agenda and that's different than trust lines.
Thanks.
They're two different things.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm passing out just some information on the strategic plan that I sent to Jeff, just to get your brains rolling so that all of you will maybe be able to send Jeff some more information on these different categories. And then when we talk about it in November, is that right? We're going to talk about it again in November, November 1st meeting. That's when you and Chris and Randall are coming up with your ideas.
I can't remember what the date was.
Is that?
Whatever you got down, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should we plan on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Then he'll have a bunch of information that he can present from what everybody's input. Is everybody understanding what I mean here? Okay. So if you just look at this really quickly, on the mission statement, I thought it was good. On the vision statement, I thought we should shorten it. There's one idea Terry suggested, we take the last part of our vision statement. This is kind of the first paragraph. Priorities, good priorities, keep them. Then on the goals and the metrics and the targets, I kind of thought we should make sure they all, like number one on priorities, safe and healthy schools. Our goal number one should be on safe and healthy schools. And then the metrics, that's how we would measure it, would be number one as well. So I just wanted to explain that little part to you. So look it over and see what else you would like to send on to Jeff. Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm going to meet with Tim next week, talk about the coordination part of it.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions on that? All right. Okay, the district-wide Zoom meeting discussion. Oh, that's me. All right, I have to think for a minute. What the heck is that? Okay, so this is the meeting, Terry, that you suggested out in Lewis Elementary with a couple of people there. So what I'm going to ask is, would you take the responsibility of looking into that and see how that would work and if it's feasible for us to do it? And we had it scheduled, I think, for the 19th of November. Is that good? And then at the next meeting, you can just report or whenever you get the information, if that's going to work or not work.
Yes, they will.
And if it will work, how it will work. Okay. Board committee reports. Terry?
Oh. I attended the USBA Executive Committee meeting last week, which is different than the Board of Directors meeting, cause now I'm on the executive committee too, but anyway. One of the things that was discussed there is the upcoming ballot initiative to, that will be on the ballot, which I hear there are many ballot initiatives on this, on this particular voting opportunity. So this is only one of many. And there's, there are multiple other school districts in the state who are trying to help bring some awareness to the, the ballot initiative on changing the constitution for, to add the line of children and disabled persons to be paid out of income tax as well. So I just, I just thought I'd bring that back and say there are other school districts who are doing this. They're just putting a statement on their website to encourage people to get educated about it. As a school district, we cannot advocate one way or another in, in a political discussion like that. But so for, for instance, here is Alpine's most recent, or their, what they're posting on their website. It says, "This coming November, you will have a chance to vote on an amendment for Utah's Constitution regarding public education funding. We encourage you to study the issue thoroughly and exercise your right to vote. The Utah Constitution as it is currently written directs all state income tax dollars to be invested for education. This is the primary source of state funding for public education. The legislature is not presently allowed to use state income tax for other budgetary needs besides public education, which includes K-12 schools and since 1995, higher education as well. The proposed change in the constitution allows use of income tax funds for programs that support children and individuals with a disability, in addition to using them for public education. Our Alpine team appreciates our legislators as they work with us to support our schools. We are also grateful for the tremendous efforts our teachers, administrators, and classified staff make every day to support student learning." So I just wondered if we want to put something on the scrolling, you know, agenda needs to do one more thing, sorry. Put something on the scrolling information page just to, to help people understand that they're going to see that. Anyway, so I just wondered what you think.
What do you think, Larry?
I, I think with the agreement we made, it's probably a good idea to, to try and get people to at least find out what it's all about.
Sure.
Cause most people will show up without any idea.
Randall?
Yeah, I agree with Larry. We got to have it available so they can look at it.
Steve? Good idea? Roger?
I like the idea. All right, so.
I just remember when, before I was on the school board, when I was a parent in 1995, I thought, "Oh, wow, something I'm supposed to vote for. Well, makes sense to me, I guess, so chick."
So how do you want?
Without, I didn't even know it was going to be there because I didn't, I wasn't a very wise voter then. I didn't study any issues, but, you know, just so people know it's coming up.
So how should we go about doing that? Do you want to write something or?
Yeah, or I can send this to agenda. We can just copy.
Are you?
It's already done.
Yeah. I thought it was fine. Everybody like that idea?
That's good, yeah.
Okay, you good with it, agenda? Okay, great, thanks. Okay, uh, let's see. All right. For the board president minute, I already told you, we completed our goal. School Land Trust training date. Mike has agreed to do the training for the School Land Trust training. And I don't know if you have a date yet or not on that. Well, everybody on the board was fine with either way that you wanted to do it. One comment by some parents was, if we were in person, we'd probably ask more questions and have a little more discussion. But that was one person. So it seems like the safer, healthy choice would be to do it online, if you feel okay with that. Okay. All right. We have the USBA Fall Regional Meeting coming up. It's our training, September 24th, and that will be online. So just, if you haven't put on your calendars, put it on. And then you have your invitation for the Legislative Luncheon, which will be sponsored by Logan. So that's what this is. So you can get that on there and it tells you which school you'll be, schools you'll be visiting. And I had a question on this. For the luncheon, it says to meet in the media room at 162 West 100 South in Logan High School. So do you know where that is?
Yeah, well, I don't know. I know about where it is in that building, but I'll, we'll get a map.
I would imagine at that time of day, we all have to go through the main doors anyway.
Yeah.
And check in at the office.
I'm wondering where we can park too, as far as that goes, so. Okay. All right, anybody else have anything?
I have a question. I've had several parents contact me about students that are quarantined, Mike. Now, the schools are supposed to have the plan. The parents that have contacted me, and I think it's up to the kids to follow through, but the parents are saying, "We're not getting direction for how to make up the work and they're getting it too late." But I had one parent say, "My child was okay. It just came a little later in the afternoon." But isn't it up to the parents, the students, to make sure they get that stuff from their teachers?
The teachers should be reaching out to the students. That's the, that's the plan, the teachers reaching out to the students. That's why they're providing the section.
Cause I had one from Ridgeline call me this week and also one from Mountain Crest that's concerned that the teachers aren't reaching out to those kids that are quarantined. So I don't know. I think we need to reinforce the principles to make sure their teachers are reaching out to those kids. If you would.
Anything else? Okay. Steve?
That whole area that you just brought up is an area of concern for us and, and we are working, talking and discussing and you just need to know that just firing this big engine up has been a, a major undertaking. And that part of having a whole bunch of kids come into that quarantine situation all at once and teachers having to prepare for those kids. It's going to get better and that's just a promise. But it's been difficult part of this, so. I wanted to have Tim just give you an update on COVID and then Gary and Mike, just a short little thing on where we're at with enrollment. And whoever wants to report on the online part, maybe both of you can. Just, just, and we'll give you a final number on October 1st, when we get that official count. But we're looking pretty good in, in the numbers compared to other school districts, so.
Okay. First of all, we, we've been super fortunate getting a school district of 19,000-plus kids and 2,500 staff members up and rolling and only having as few cases as we have. I think it speaks to the commitment of our staff and students and parents to help us in all aspects of this. Anyway, I, I was about to hit send today on this and I'll, I will send it to you, but I sent you last week's numbers, but we currently have had 14 total cases in the school district since we started. We have eight active cases right now and six recovered. I think that's up one as of last night. Green Canyon got a, another case. We have had cases at all four of our high schools. Skyview being the one with just one and Green Canyon leading out, they have six active cases right now. So the, the bulk of our active cases, our eight cases are at one school right now.
Does Cash not have any?
Who?
Cash, right.
They have a quarantine situation right now as of yesterday.
A whole school?
No, just, just some cases. We're working through a case there. We've had zero at our middle schools. We've had three elementary schools with one each. Just countywide reports, well, let's go state first. You may have seen in the news that the state hit 900 and we've been riding them 300 to 400, so quite a spike in the state. Some of those are school-related, some of them are college-related. Our local health department reported 36 cases yesterday, which is double what we've been, a little more than double what we've been getting on a daily rate. They reported that, our local health department said the age range on those is between 18 and 24, the bulk of them right now. I know U S U's been very active at doing things as well, so I don't know if, I don't know where those 18 to 24-year-olds range as far as where they're at in life. Mike's been working really hard on, with his secondary principals. There are some pain points in this and it's surrounding the quarantine. So in addition to the active cases that we currently have, we currently have about a 163 kid, I don't know, even more than that, about 181 folks in quarantine as a result of those eight cases. Actually, 103 is a result of the eight cases. So what happens is you end up, you have to do a contact tracing for each of those kids and then we quarantine. And that's caused, some of the pain points with that start with the contact tracing. Our administrators and nurses are working. Our administrators and nurses are working very hard through those cases to contact trace. And then it switches over to the teacher who then has to keep those kids up with their classes. We have a tactical team that goes out and tries to meet with teachers and make sure they have the technology and, and to know how to do that. So, and as we said, we need to get better at that. In addition to that group, the reason we have more in quarantine is we have 69 individuals in our district that are quarantined, not because of a, an active case in the schools, but because mom or dad or uncle or somebody in their household has COVID and they got quarantined for that reason. Or they self-quarantine because they traveled down south and saw a cousin who happened to have COVID. And that's been a little difficult to sort out. We're communicating back and forth now better with the health department and they're communicating to us, people that they're putting into quarantine that are in our schools that aren't necessarily related with the school case. We've had no cases so far that are school transmitted. Everything is either community or family transmitted. So no student, student or student to staff transmission that we're aware of at least, so. Thanks for all your work on that, Mike.
That's awesome, thank you.
Gary, you want to lead out the elementary?
Just real quick, Chris, in answer maybe to your question on TSSA plans, just so that you guys are aware, I went through all of the elementary plans prior to this meeting and reviewed those just to make sure they kind of fell within the guidelines we had given. And Mike had gone over all of the secondary too. So just know that we think we found everything, you know, you shouldn't see any glaring red flags to, to flag on that, but you may find something too. As far as the elementary and our startup, I had one of our principals, who is a 30-year veteran, you know, educator, he called me and he said, Gary, I've been doing this a long time. He said, this is the hardest startup I've ever had. And, and I don't disagree with him at all. This has been difficult. But at the same time, I have to tell you, we're a month into this. Did you see the public input tonight? We didn't have one parent here. We didn't have one teacher here. We had no one here complaining or concerned or upset with what we're doing. We haven't done it perfect, I'll be honest. But I think we have done a great job. We spent our whole summer in the district office trying to get this ready, trying to come up with every what-if scenario we could think of. About a month ago, we turned it over to our teachers and to our principals. They have the ball in their court now and they have done an amazing job. As far as our numbers overall, we are up just a hair. Our kindergarten this year has three more students than our kindergarten last year. That's not very many, so that means we're, we're pretty consistent. In the upper grades, we've seen some move in overall, but for the most part, our, our elementary is held pretty close to what we had last year. I think up as a district, we might be up a couple hundred and I think most of those are going to be in the secondary actually as we look at those. Online, we have 523 students in our online program, our Cache Academy. That did not exist three months ago. There was no online for K-6. And Kurt Jenkins has taken that and has done a great job with that. He has some of our teachers that we pulled out of the classroom who considered themselves high risk and they are teaching that online. They have some aides who are helping them. Some of the difficult things that we found, we, we got it up and going, thought we're doing great, then comes along dibbles or Akadents, we call it now, and then we have to test every kid. But guess what? We're still required by the state to test those kids. So that makes it a little more difficult. We've asked them to come to the school if they're willing for that test. If not, we're trying to test them virtually. Or we've even had some people go to their home and do that. Kindergarten has an assessment that, in order to start every year and that has to be done even for those kids who are virtual. So our district team has been working on that. Our latest, we just had a meeting this last week that talked about your at-risk students. And you know, we have touted our Tier Two program for reading for years. It's, it's one of the main things that puts us on the map for where we're at. We still have to provide that Tier Two instruction for our online students. So that's something that we're currently working through. So I've said it before, but this is the ultimate game of whack-a-mole. As soon as we hit one and we think we pounded that down, something else pops up over here. But I can tell you, we're, we're doing it. There is a cost though. Our administrators and our teachers are feeling some exhaustion from this. They're working harder than they've ever worked before, but I think they're doing an amazing job, so. Any questions from the elementary? Yeah, Roger?
I know you have 523 online. Do we have a record of how many are homeschooling this year? Do we have any record of that?
Uh, we, we can get that for you and we should.
I have a lot of neighbors that are homeschooling. I'm just curious what that is.
We have anybody who's taking the opportunity to come in and tell us who that they're actually homeschooling. They don't have to.
That's, that's the key, I was going to say. They're, they're supposed to register with us and let us know they're doing that. Not everyone does.
There's no teeth behind that.
Some of these people we've been contacting for a dibbles test or an Akadents test, they have said, well, I told you guys, I'm homeschooling. But what they haven't done is come in and filled out the form and actually told us they're homeschooling. So some of those numbers, yeah, fall somewhere in between. Great question. Anything else for me?
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, this has been a fun year, you know, and I'm still looking for the end of the tunnel. I think we can start to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. That's what everybody's hoping for. Just to give you an idea on some numbers, last year, we always do an October 1st count that we had to report. Our October 1st count last year was 18-802. If you go into Power School and you look at our count as far as September 15th, we're 18-844. Now, if our students take online to our district's online program, which we're part of a consortium, we can count that student in our numbers, which this does include, which is a great advantage to a district. But it does cost us some money because we're paying for teachers. We have a lot of our secondary teachers who have just say, hey, I'll, I'll sign up to teach some online classes and they do it outside their contract time. And they're compensated to do that. And I think we have a list of about 22 teachers who are involved in that. And our, our kids could be taking a math class from a teacher from, from Davis because we're all part of a group and, and we're sharing wherever we need to share. We have an equivalency of just under 300 full-time students who are online. But we have a lot of our students who are doing some online and then they'll be in the school for a period or two as well. And that happens a lot in the secondary schools. So as far as our student numbers, our student numbers are holding. We have a lot of students in our, in our buildings. And I'll, I have to give the credit to the principals and the teachers, everything that they're trying to do to mitigate. It's so hard to do that in a, in a large mass of people. But they're doing it, they're working on it every day. And if you've heard the media, what's going on, you've, you've heard lots of school boards holding emergency meetings because of here comes the, a school gets to account of 15 students. Then the school board has to get involved and you have a big, long discussion and you try to decide what's our next move. I'm not, I'm not predicting that's coming, but I think we'd better be ready for that kind of discussion. But it's not that the schools aren't trying. The schools are trying to do everything they can. They're, I'll give you an example. We've been going through some of the guidelines that we set up back in the first part of August. One of the guidelines is our, the school district would not create or sponsor activities or events that would cause large groups to gather. And our schools have been very, very good to do that. Now, we can't control Utah high schools. And that's going, it's going very well. All of our high schools have gone to online ticketing. So there doesn't have to be that type of interaction going on. Everything is working online that way. And we have a lot of people, the ball games, and it's a great thing that we can do that right now. But they're doing their thing, Utah high schools. But we're not sponsoring any activities that create that kind of environment. We try to get as much parent support as we can. An example, we've had a little bit of criticism. We made the decision early in August, we weren't going to do homecoming dance because that created just exactly what we said. We're not going to sponsor or create those environments. And schools have accommodated and worked with that and they're doing some other creative things right now. But our parents, on the other hand, are, they're going to hold dances on their own somewhere and do that kind of stuff. And I just hope it doesn't backfire and create an, an issue in our schools. You know, we can't control that.
Yeah, I heard there's one in Paradise this weekend.
Hey, Paradise is going to have a great dance, right?
I guess, I don't know.
But anyway, we've had a good opening with secondary. The, the teachers are stressed out. We are looking at some, some possible plans. What do we do in a secondary school if, if one student is, is positive and that ripples through five or six other classes? That can mean up to 40 or so students are quarantined. And you do that with, with three or four kids and you start multiplying that through the school system. I mean, if you have 10 kids who are quarantined, that many, now you have a third of your school quarantined. And now we're telling our teachers, not only are you going to teach that classroom, but the kids there and you're going to take care of those kids who are online. So we're looking at a trigger point. What does that trigger point mean when we have to do something else to help support our teachers and give them the time to do a better job working online with the comments that you'd shared tonight, Roger? Because that's a commitment we made to the public, that we would reach out and, and make sure that happened during that quarantine time, okay? Our numbers are good in secondary schools. We're full. Green Canyon is bulging, you know, getting crowded there. So any questions in secondary schools?
Did we talk about next summer being the summer we were going to do the 10 Classroom Edition on Green Canyon?
We haven't set a date.
We're starting to put that project together.
Yeah.
Del and I are just going to have a discussion of where the money's going to come from. That'll be the first step.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, it's going to be a project that I hopefully would be going by next summer.
Yeah. We are, we are getting a lot of students from, from local districts who want to be part of our schools and Green Canyon and Ridge Line seem to be the gathering points for that, so. But they're accommodating that and we're making it work, so. Any other questions?
Just thanks, thanks to all of you.
Yes, thank you.
I, I can't even imagine what your days are like these days, but really appreciate it.
Can I, just in closing, I want to do this in honor of teachers. This is out of the book, the guy who was 40 years at Disney. And he's talking about how to be a good executive, how to be a good boss. And his number two is to take your role as a teacher serious. If you want to be surrounded by great employees, being a teacher, coach and a counselor is far more effective than just being a boss. Earn a reputation as a good teacher and people will line up to work for you. If you help other leaders become good teachers as well, you'll multiply your value. I think that's really a, a nice statement coming from the business world. If you're going to be effective, you need to be what we have in every classroom in this district and that's an effective teacher. What we have in every school, effective principalships and administrators and certainly our district office is full of people who are outstanding teachers. Just want you to know, it's been, I tell you, it has been a tough opening. And we've got to look for ways that we can express that appreciation. I do appreciate Kathy putting something together from the board that we sent out. That was very appreciative and appreciated and we want you to know that there are few districts in the state that would have as good a relationship between the board and their, their employees and the Cache School District. We want you to know how much we appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Just for your information, there were some emails that came back saying thanks for the thank you note. So do we like that idea enough that each one of you would be willing to take a month and write something?
I would.
I would.
Okay, should I let you volunteer or should I just put you on a schedule?
Just assign us.
Just assign us.
Yeah, please assign.
I'll do that then, all right. Thank you, board members. You've had to do a lot of extra this year as well and I just appreciate all that you do to try and help our district be very successful. Thanks to all of our district, to you Superintendent.
You're welcome.
It is a challenging year, but there's a lot of great things going on. So anybody have anything else? All righty, this meeting is adjourned.